Okay, welcome to the Rockport Select Board Meeting of March 8, 2021. We are still operating under the rules of the pandemic. We are all here and the first item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Yeah, so I don't have much to add to my written report, but I will just hit on the highlights of that. So we do have a Public Works employee, Daryl Libby, has submitted his retirement notice to the town. So congratulations to Daryl after, as of right now, sixteen and a half years with the town, which is a pretty good accomplishment, obviously.
Yeah.
Other personnel news, Bill Napower, who was our contract planner with Midcoast Economic Development District, is also transitioning into retirement. So he's been replaced by Orion Thomas for his, for the two days at the, with Rockport. So Orion's days in the office are going to be Wednesday and Thursday. And as you know, as you know, in the budget, I've budgeted for a, for him. So hopefully that will, that will make it continue into the budget. Because of the better news on the pandemic front, beginning on March 1st, the town's staff all return to regular shifts and the town offices open during the regular times, Monday through Friday, 5:00. Elections and nomination papers are available for two, three-year terms on the select board, three, three-year terms for the Budget Committee, two, three-year terms on the Library Committee, and one, three-year term for the SAD 28 School Board of Directors and Five Town CSD. Papers are due back Friday, April 9th at 5:00. Anybody out there is interested? The last thing that I wanted to mention, and this is a great thing, that the three fire departments are undertaking, Rockland, Rockport, and Camden, because of the recent fires that we've had throughout the state that have involved deaths. Unfortunately, the three fire departments essentially have come together, basically trying to have an initiative called the, the Home Safety Initiative, and they're available and willing and want to help residents with anything that they need, whether it's a home safety survey to look at any life safety issues by installing smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, by showing them where they should be placed in the homes, helping with exit drills, providing smoke and carbon monoxide detectors for those that can't afford them. So I would encourage anybody in Rockport, obviously, to contact Fire Chief Peaslee at the fire station, 236-4437. And obviously, anybody that's in the other communities as well as in Rockland, Camden, to do the same thing. So it's great to see the, this initiative going forward. So hopefully this will help some, some people out there.
To contact their own fire chiefs.
Yes, yes, Camden and Rockland should contact their own fire chiefs, yes.
Yeah, that is great.
That's my report.
So are there questions? I'm gonna go ahead and say a couple of things. One is that congratulations to Daryl Libby, sixteen years is, sixteen and a half years is a long time working for the town. It's great. The second thing I wanted to say is, I just wanted to make it clear that I am not going to be running for the board in June. I, I had made this decision because I am chairing this multi-town effort, as you know, for broadband, and it is taking a whole lot of time. And to do it right and to have any kind of reasonable chance of success, I need to really devote my efforts to that. And I think I can do more for the town in doing that than, than running for the select board. So that's what I've decided to do. All right, so moving on, is there public input on non-agenda items?
Well, Deborah, I guess there'll be time to say thank you, but you know, it's, it seems to recognize the amazing things you've done for the town. We'll have time for that.
I do not have any public comments at this point.
Okay, great. The, are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, so then the next item is the consent agenda, which includes the resignation of Ted Skoronsky on the Planning Board and the meeting minutes of January 25th.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All right, take a roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, moving on to action items. The first, the first item is to act on committee application of Samantha Appleton for the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Yes, and I, I'm not sure why I don't see Samantha or Kurt on the call yet. I know that they were sent the links.
And Kurt Penny?
Yeah.
It's not on either.
No, I don't see either one. But I will say that they both were recommended to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Committee by the Chair and the Vice Chair, Rich Anderson and Megan Dwyer. I think maybe Denise, you had talked with Rich or seems like somebody, maybe it was Jeff.
Jeff, I think Jeff could speak to it, I think they both.
Sure, Michelle and I are both on that committee. And both those folks, Samantha and Kurt, are excellent candidates for this Compliment Committee. They did come highly recommended, they're very energetic, very engaged, and they know their stuff.
And they, and while they haven't officially been sworn in, they have been observing the meetings and they've been active. So I think that there's no concerns from me.
Maybe there is just some miscommunication.
There must have been. Whoever makes the motions, please add a month and date and year in their appointed positions.
Yeah, what are those periods for the?
They actually, they actually don't have terms on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, because once the committee's work is done, then that committee will sunset.
Ah, good point.
That's a good incentive. Get it done. I move, I move the board appoint Samantha Appleton to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
I will second.
Any discussion? Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next?
I move the board appoint Kurt Penny to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Any further discussion? All right, Michelle?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
What level does that bring us to? Does anybody know off the top of their head?
It's close to 12, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Good. I move the board appoint Carter Schimpf at the plant, as, to the Planning Board as a regular member, with a term ending June 30th, 2023.
I'll second that.
So he was just going from a, he was going from an alternate.
Yeah, he's, he's an alternate now and has requested with the, with the resignation to become a regular member.
Yeah, and I think we even told him not, that he didn't need to, to join us tonight, because he's already an alternate anyway, so.
Yeah, he'll, he'll do fine.
Great, any further discussion? Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the next item is to act on the invitation for RES Letter of Interest. Bill?
Yes, so as the board is aware, the RES redevelopment, we, we had sent out an RFQ, request for qualifications twice previously, once with no responses, and then again, it was reissued. The RES Task Force has looked at this and discussed this issue and felt that better to send out an invitation to submit a letter of interest, which is a little bit less than an RFQ. Really, it's what it's looking is to try to create discussion with potential developers that are interested. So it's for developers to send us their interest in having, beginning the discussion with us so that we can sit down and have discussions and determine the path forward, really. So this, this was crafted by Mary Stevens from the RES Task Force, was sent to me and Brian, Dan Cause, and Orion Thomas, and we wordsmithed it a bit, sent it back out to all of the RES Task Force members, and they agreed with, with the draft you have in your materials.
And I understand too, that some of the members on the committee will actually sort of shepherd this to developers that, who they know, you know, rather than it just going out into some internet sphere. It'll actually be forwarded to developers with whom we'd like to talk.
And some discussions that are even taking place, some of those committee members have even reached out and engaged some interest in talking with some of those developers. So it's a much more, well, I think it's a more coordinated effort than it was in the past.
Yes.
So hopefully. Great, and I guess we do need to do a motion on this?
Yes, it would be important to, for the board to approve this.
Okay. I move the board approve the invitation to submit a letter of interest for the RES project as presented.
I'll second.
This is Mark.
You know, I, excuse me. What I'd like to have happen during this process, which I don't recall happening during, I'll use the Allen Agency's proposal, for instance. I know that the committee didn't feel it warranted going further or something along those lines, but anything that comes forward, I think the board should probably get the, the final say as to what does and doesn't go forward, rather than the committee, and I appreciate their work, but rather than the committee thinking they know what's best for that area. So I would hope that anything that comes forward will be brought to us, rather than the committee just making a decision.
Yeah, and I would, I, I agree with that, Mark, and I, I think no decisions were made in the past, because what happened was that they had received a couple of, you know, indications of interest, a couple of responses to the RFP, and then COVID hit right after that. And so they never had the meetings, you know, what was intended was they were going to have meetings with those, you know, with those folks, and that just never occurred, and then one of them withdrew. And, and they were hoping to get, all the while, they were hoping to get more, you know, more, more interest than, than they'd gotten. And I think that with this new plan, they, we are in a better place to get more.
Absolutely, I mean, I, I was there during the presentation, from the gentleman to the south of us. I don't recall his name, but neither here nor there. And, and I, I for one would be a board member that would be eager for this property to be aggressively going forward into the hands of someone else, you know, as soon as possible, so that we can start focusing on other things.
Right, and I think the idea here with the letter of, the letter of interest is to have those discussions, as Bill indicated, to sit down and have some discussions in terms of, you know, further, further advancing the knowledge of the RES Task Force, in terms of, you know, what would make sense in the market, what developers might be willing to do and all. So it's not the actual RFPs, you know, but I think that when the RES Task Force, you know, will be better informed at the end of this process and, you know, can then go forward.
Yeah, I'm just a little fearful of, of the market. I mean, I, I think that if things start tightening up, that may deter good people from coming forward. So full speed ahead.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? We have a first and a second, so Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the last action item is to act on the reappointment of the Registrar of Voters.
Yes, so this appointment actually expired on December 31st and was missed by staff. So that's why it's, it's a two-year term that's effective January 1st through December 31st, 2022.
I move the board approve the appointment of Linda Greenlaw as Registrar, as Registrar of Voters for a term ending December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
My only question is, is there any risk or anything that happened between December and now that we need to be aware of, since it wasn't, okay?
No, there isn't.
Can, Bill?
Yes.
I mean, there's a whole slew of people that we do on usually July 1st, when we have our first full board meeting after the elections. Is this something that, that will now be added to that, so we can do everybody at once? Or does it have to be separate?
It, it has to be separate. There, there is, there are some appointments like this that are separate, like the Code Officer, LPI, Health Officer, you know, positions like that, that aren't necessarily committees and, and don't fall on a fiscal year, just be based on when those people were originally appointed.
Yep. So we can't. Could we, yeah, could we, to help ensure that this doesn't go by the wayside again, and I don't believe it will, but could we, next July, I guess it would have to be, you know, make it for a year position from July 1st forward? I mean, we're sort of out of, out of kilter with everything else.
By statute, it's a two-year position.
And does it have to be done on a calendar year basis?
Um, I'd have to look at the statute, I don't remember off the top of my head, but this is, it's, it's unusual that this fell through the cracks, because we have a complete list of all the positions and when they expire. And so this one, for some reason, wasn't on that list. So I mean, that gets checked routinely, that list does, and this one just wasn't on it, so.
Thank you.
It certainly is now.
This one we'll never forget.
That's right.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Yes.
So, yes. I vote yes. Moving on to discussion items, we have the Midcoast Community Internet Coalition Guiding Principles. So as you know, we have this, this group that we have put together that was called the, well, it's technically still called the Midcoast Broadband Committee, but because that's our coalition, it's too close a name to the main broadband coalition, so we're renaming it, which hasn't happened officially yet until Wednesday, but it looks as though it's going to be the Midcoast Community Internet Coalition, as indicated. We have eight towns that are currently participating in the coalition. We also have several other towns who have come forth and want to be in the coalition. Decisions obviously are going to have to be made as to what make, what makes economic sense in terms of, you know, ultimate participation in the coalition. There's a lot of stuff that has to be done, we've been, we've been, Denise has been working with me as well as with Matt Seagull from Camden. We've been having lots and lots of off, or in-between coalition meetings, conference calls with Down East Broadband, Law Firm Eaton Peabody, EC Fiber in Vermont, Pioneer Broadband, GWI, LCI, Tomorrow. And so we've been gathering a ton of knowledge in terms of how to, how to, how to put together regional utility, how to design the system, how to, how to attract financing or obtain financing, I should say. And let me say, as long as we're on that, I think that, you know, we've all talked about and stressed the idea that this, not the idea, but the principle, that anything that we do in this regard gets done without taxpayer funding. So we're looking at what EC Fiber did, which was through private investment. We're looking at low-cost municipal loans that a regional utility would have access to. We're also looking at the option of revenue-backed bonds with no recourse to the town. So we're really doing a ton of work on this. And, but one of the first things that we really need to do is to make sure that our partners in the coalition are truly solid partners in the coalition and that we all are on the same page with respect to what our guiding principles are. Prior to Mark's involvement on the Select Board, and I would, I single mark out, because he is the, the longest-running number now at this stage. Prior to that, at the time that the 1.5-mile network came in to Rockport, there, you know, the prior Select Board had, and I was on the Technology Committee around that period of time. And, you know, what was approved by the board and was contemplated really is reflected in these principles. I don't think there's anything new here, except the regional utility. The regional utility concept, you know, was not present, because it was, it was contemplated that what would be done in Rockport would be a, a municipal network. But it was contemplated there would be fiber to the home, that it would be open access so that you could have multiple ISPs or providers offering services on that network so that there would be competition. That I know the, I don't think that we ever, I know, I know what, the, the, the policy at the time of that board was that everybody should get one gig. And I think that one of the, one of the concerns that the Technology Committee had at the time was that we were overreaching to say everybody gets one gig, you know? There are some people who don't need to pay for a gig, they don't need to have a gig. And so the Technology Committee, at the time, with John Berman, Joe Stronowski, myself and a couple of others, were of the view that 100, 100 megabits download and upload symmetrical, which is a good, strong internet connection, which obviously comes cheaper than a gig, should be our minimum, with the idea that the capacity for those who want a gig has to be there for any internet provider who's, who's providing services on that network. Universal access also means that it needs to be available to all residences and all businesses within the geographic region of the utility. And then obviously, you know, best, best-in-class customer support with locally managed and operated offices, obviously, right here. So I'd be happy to have your insight, your feedback on all of this. And all of the participating towns are receiving, you know, obviously, are addressing these guiding principles and talking about them too. And the idea, because it's under discussion items, the idea was not that we needed to make a motion on it or anything tonight, but simply to get feedback to see if there's any concerns that any of you have with respect to these. Michelle?
I have no concerns, nope.
Anybody else?
I think this is a good summary of, I mean, we've, we've gotten good feedback in talking with all these other people about this is, this is sort of a good sweet spot to be in.
Yeah. And I think 100, 100 symmetrical is a good spot to be too. You know, just to give you an idea, you know, I can't tell you how many people I've, I've talked to that, for example, they have DSL with, not to diss anybody here, but it's just factual. For example, one couple I talked to that has Consolidated Communications and they have DSL, that's the only access they have, and it's really, really poor. And they pay over $100 a month for this really, really, really poor access. To give you an idea, GWI right now, today, on their website, they've actually gone down in price, and they now offer 125 symmetrical for $55.
Wow. I can, I can vouch for your, for your friends that have consolidated. I, I have it at my other location and it's $75 a month, and it's, it's painful.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, you know, something I've learned through this, which, you know, is that the upload speed, I mean, we've, we've all focused on the download, and when you use whichever internet service provider you use, they tell you about the download speed you're going to get, which is, all you want to do is stream movies, you're fine. But Zoom, the people who are freezing up on these Zoom calls is because their upload speed is lousy. And, you know, that's becoming increasingly important to make sure that speed is up to par.
And plus the, plus the fact when you're talking about speed, you know, it's always, always, when you've got copper wire, you've got cable, you've got consolidated, either DSL or, or cable, it's always up to speeds, and that's what we always have to remember and tell people, up to speeds, which means it could be anything from zero up to without amount. It's not a guaranteed speed, which is why people say, well, I, you know, I pay for 100 or I get 100 from so-and-so who I won't name, you know? Well, you don't, if you take the speed test, you may find out that you don't. And, and first off, to Denise's point, you don't get that upload speed, but even, even on the download speed, you often, you know, you, you don't get, they're called advertised speeds, but they're not, they're not true speeds. And that's, you know, that's well-known in this industry. And on the other hand, when you've got fiber, it's actually guaranteed. You can go, for example, to GWI, and I'm not just pushing GWI here, because there's a couple of vendors that we already know that want to do business here. But GWI is a perfect example, because I happen to have been on their site today, that has a speed guarantee. You get, you guaranteed to get 125 up and down, for example, for $55, or they will do something about it and make it happen, or, you know, do whatever they do. But Pioneer, Pioneer Broadband, it's a very interesting company that does business in Callis and Baileyville. And they also provide 100 symmetrical for $69.99. And, and I know that GWI was higher than them, and now all of a sudden GWI is lower than them. So we've got competition at work already here. But GWI and Pioneer are both great companies, and for example, they both have already expressed a desire to, you know, to offer services in this area if we, if we build this open access network, so. And we're lucky, because, we're lucky in that regard, because even though everybody talks about open access, there really isn't another place or another town that any of us know about in the state of Maine that actually achieves open access by having the choice of at least two providers on the network. And we've already got two that are very interested. So. Okay, any further comments? So can I take from this that you, you don't, I mean, everybody is sort of consensus on board with what you see here?
Keep on keeping on.
Okay, well, can I push you, can I push you one step further and just say, I mean, the next step was to actually discuss this and then bring it back for a vote, but if you guys are really on board with it, we could take a vote to support it.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for the broadband coalition, wouldn't it?
Yeah, especially since we lead it, it would be a good step forward to leadership.
I move we approve the Midcoast Community Internet Coalition Guiding Principles as reflected on this handout.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah. Real quick, discussion wise, I mean, we are one party to the coalition.
Yes.
So, I mean, from a Rockport, town of Rockport Municipal Government, we would support this.
Yes.
We can't be talking to other parties, as we know.
No, of course not, no, no, we're just, that's why we're exposing it, so to speak, to all the Select Boards or broadband committees where that's applicable to these towns, to, to get that sense of, of buy-in to these principles so that we can actually solidify a coalition. Because, you know, if a town comes back and says, oh no, you know, I want something totally different, then, well, then that's the first step of saying, okay, we don't think we're on the same page in this coalition, we really can't move forward like that. So it's a pretty basic first step, sort of.
Just another question, when we talk about universal access, that's rather a broad term, what are we specifically asking that provider provide us?
It means that, it means you have to, it, it means that the utilities and guiding principle for the utility is to get access, fiber access to all places. Obviously, if people, people have to then decide whether or not they take it, whether they're interested, whether they can afford it. But it means that we get it there.
So for example, in neighborhoods where everything is underground, it would allow that to. So for example, in neighborhoods where everything is underground, it would allow that to occur as well?
Yep.
As part of the package?
Yep. And obviously, all those things have to be considered by the utility and looked at from an economics, you know, financially, financial viability standpoint. But this is, this is what they've done, for example, in DBU, it's what Down East Broadband, it's what they've done in EC Fiber. You, you know, they, they, the, the folks that have been down this road say that universal access is absolutely key. Because if you take the position that you're going to, well, we can't get down this road or we can't do that road, then it makes you no better than the big telecoms out there and then you lose credibility like immediately. And I think that, you know, if you're talking about taking taxpayer money and doing that, that's one thing. But if you're not using taxpayer money, then I think that frees the utility up to be able to do that. Anything else? Okay, so we had a first and a second, so Mark?
You're muted.
Sorry.
Yes, forgot I muted myself.
Nice.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, I'm in alignment with these principles.
And I thought, yes, okay, thank you, guys. I think this would be helpful and, like I said, showing that leadership. All right, next item on the agenda is whether or not to include STR non-binding article on the town meeting warrant. Jeff, will you want to start out since you were the one that proposed this at the last one?
Yeah, I did. So just to recap on the history, not long ago, we voted as a board not to include the article, including the specific ordinance on the ballot, upcoming ballot in June. And following that, we heard from over 30 people that requested, although not a formal petition, however, it is a form of feedback, requested that they have the opportunity to vote on whether they want a short-term, uh, ordinance or not. Following that, we had feedback from the first 30 people that, uh, that was no good, and then we've had some other feedback since. So my point of putting this on here was that we do something similar to what we did with fireworks not long ago, where we had one person potentially do a solo push for a fireworks ordinance in the town of Rockport, get some signatures and it motivated us to take action with a ordinance development and subsequent approval. So my thought on this is that we, between now and perhaps next meeting, develop language that we would look at to be included as an article for vote if we still wanted one. And then at that point in time, we could either vote yes or no. A basically survey type question goes on the, the June ballot.
Other comments?
What, uh, what are the requirements, Bill, for having a petition brought forward? You know, how many signatures are they supposed to have? You know, what are we opening ourselves up to in the future? If what we're proposing doesn't go by the way it ought to be?
Well, a, a formal petition for it to be, to force the question onto our town meeting warrant would have to have, it's either 10% or 20% of the
10%.
10% of the last gubernatorial election turnout would have to be signatures of registered voters submitted. And it also has to have other language on it with, you know, certain circulators and all that sort of stuff as well.
So the, the petition that was given us lacked the proper amount of signatures, I would say, for, for starters. I know that's not what you're talking about, Jeff, but the petition that was given us lacked the amount of signatures necessary and asked for a, uh, an ordinance to be put on the ordinance as written, which, you know, we, we were working on it, but it wasn't finalized. So that would be strike two on that particular part of it. But I would just be afraid we'd be opening ourselves up to many more such actions coming at us.
Well, I think the board always has the discretion to put an, an article on the ballot. And so I think that while there was nothing binding and forcing us to put this on the ballot, we have the discretion to do that. And it seems to me that we're in a perfect scenario where we really ought to because clearly we have people on either side of this question. And so I look at this as being nothing more than, in essence, a survey. You know, you can send a survey out to people and it's not very, it's not, you don't know who's submitting it. You don't know how many times one person is submitting it. You don't get very high percentage of responses with surveys. It's one way of surveying our voters to find out what they really want in a more controlled and efficient and responsive process.
And I think particularly in, oh, sorry, Michelle.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I think particularly in this environment where we haven't been able to meet, listen and talk to one another to learn that. I know we were, you know, there was some criticism in the press that we, we shouldn't have to survey. We should just know what our voters want because we're getting together and listening and talking. And it's like, we have not had that opportunity in this year. And it does seem like at least an efficient way to make sure that the select board is responding to our, our voters' wishes.
I mean, I don't want to pat myself on the back, but I will. If anybody remembers what I said about the downside of waiting until November, we wouldn't be doing this today if we would have at least waited until November, which we could have had public, hopefully in-person conversations throughout the summer to a point where everybody would be appeased. And then we could have put it on the November ballot. So again, I'll pat myself on the back.
And I, I don't think, I don't think we would have gotten any further had we done that. Mark, I don't think we would have gotten any further other than to just know that there were people on both sides of this issue. And so you really don't have a way of knowing just how many people are on one side or the other side, you know? Unless you do something like this.
But that's, but that's what Denise was just saying is that it would give people more of an opportunity to talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, Denise said that, I didn't. The papers said that, but I didn't.
Or Michelle.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't really buy, I don't really buy that argument because I think the bottom, bottom line is you're, we know we have people on either side and it's not going to get us any further. Michelle, go ahead.
Um, so my question is, what really happens? So let's say we decide to put a question on there and the vote is yes. Well, like with fireworks, the vote was yes, and then all of a sudden we had an ordinance. So what would the process be after that?
Jeff?
Oh, I, what we do is, it, this would be just like the fireworks in many respects, is we get, we put an article on the June ballot. The answer to that tells us whether the town voters want us to even spend any time on a short-term rental ordinance or not. And we can put some specific language in there so that we, you know, at least state what we're talking about when we do this, because that's still always a question. And then from that point on, if, if the vote is a yes vote, go ahead and develop an ordinance, then we go through the ordinance development procedure. We take what we have as a draft, we go through the same types of things that Mark was talking about with public comment and the whole rest of the formal ordinance process that we haven't been through yet. Uh, and then the ordinance gets developed and by some date in August, I believe, it gets wrapped up and then it's put on the ballot for November vote.
But to the contrary, you know, you may, you may well get a vote that says, no, we don't want this. And if you get a vote that, guess what, the select board gets to focus on other things and they get to say to the people who want it, you know, sorry, but you seem to truly be in the minority and the select board does something else.
Right. It goes one way or the other. This is what we want you to spend time on or this is what we don't want you to spend time on.
And I won't be on the board to have to worry about it. However, I can say that if it's, you know, if it's, if you, if, if you get an overwhelming vote one way or the other, it's pretty much a mandate, right? If you, if you get, if you get a pretty close vote, then that's when you guys are kind of still in the pickle, you know? It's too, well, what do we do? What, do we do it or we don't? Or maybe at that point you say, hey, there's clearly, you know, kind of half and half in the town and it's all about, it's all about what the details are. And maybe then you have some more public get-togethers where people actually come and talk about it a little bit more and you get something that's more palatable. I just think, I, I just think that we should always want to know what our voters think, so. All right. So in terms of, if we, if somebody wants to make a motion or we just do kind of a straw, straw sort of poll here that, you know, then we'll put it on for a draft article next time around, if that's the majority of the board.
What I, what I propose is that, I'll just roll a proposal for some kind of consensus. We don't necessarily have to hold on it, I don't think. Is that we have an article drafted that surveys, it's basically a survey type question for inclusion on a June article. And that, that gets brought to us next time for our board meeting for review, vote, motion approval, discussion, modification, edits. And it either goes or it doesn't go.
Bill, timing wise, does that, does that work or do you have some other suggestions in terms of the board looking at something and voting it up or down?
No, I, I think, I think you would need to have this, a, a vote on this, that's your next meeting on March 22nd, because I think the, trying to, I don't have a schedule in front of me, but I'm thinking.
The 8th is too late. Cause you, you have a 45 day window backwards, I believe, from the, from the vote in June, which is, you know, it's going to be tight if you went to April 8th at the latest.
Yeah, I think that's the, I think that's when the, when the town meeting has to, the, the warrant has to be approved, is that first meeting in April for the board. So that the entire town meeting warrant has to be approved then. So you would have to, you'd have to have the language really wrapped up.
We really, for the next meeting?
For the next meeting, you really should, yes. I, I guess the only question I would have for, for Jeff or, or the board is if, you know, what, what are you envisioning in this article? You know, that's because it makes a big difference. This isn't as easy as
fireworks.
You know, the fireworks where it was simply a, do you want to ban them or not? Which was, you know, a real cut and dried, is it, you know, is it, do you want to regulate? Do you want to create an ordinance to regulate? Do you want, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of language that could be put into that question. It has different meanings.
Well, I wonder if we could do a couple of alternatives. Maybe that's a good idea, maybe it's not, but.
No, all you're going to do is, you know, try to make it as simple as you can.
Yep.
Straightforward in, in as layman terms as you can.
Yep.
And, you know, to Bill's point, you know, we have, you know, we're, we're talking tonight, we don't even know, you know, there are several ways that you could put it on there. So I, I guess I would suggest that Bill come back with something for us for April 8th, knowing what we have talked about.
March 20th, right?
22nd, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have this on the agenda, we'll have some suggested language on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can put some, I can put some language together. If that's what the board wants, you know, wants to, wants to see.
And I would say that, you know, we've already gotten letters from the original, you know, folks that we know are opposed. And probably in these next two weeks, they're going to want to load us up with letters about why it's a bad idea, why short-term rental is a bad idea, you know, regulation and people can send anything they want. But this is not about the issue of whether short-term rental is good or bad. All it simply is, is finding out what voters want. And I, you know, I, I don't think anybody's convinced, going to convince me that surveying our voters is not a good thing, so.
Well, I think instead of saying, you know, what the board wants, Bill, I think we ought to do a little straw poll as to who wants it and who doesn't.
You mean today of this board? That's, that's what I said earlier, the week.
Yeah, I just.
Vote on it or we can do consensus, so we can take a vote on it or just a, a informal show of hands. I mean, I think Jeff and Denise and I have already indicated that, that we're supportive of it and.
I just think if we have the opportunity in this circumstance to find out what our voters want, that is important for the select board to, to know what the majority of the voters in our town want on this issue.
Yeah, I think it's difficult at this point to do a thumbs up or thumbs down until we see the language, just what we want to have on the art, what we, what we want the article to include. Because it may be, it could take on all sorts of different lives of its own if we're not careful.
Yeah, all I, all I would want to see is.
Sorry, there's clearly a majority of the board that supports it, so we move forward with something in the next agenda.
Yes, that's what I was asking and then we'll have it on the next agenda for discussion, possible action. And we'll go from there.
Well, it needs to be, not possible, it needs to be action, up or down.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one of the things I don't want to see happen is like last August where we didn't have our warrant articles ready in time and we had to have a special meeting in August. So this needs to be done so that we can do one vote in June and not have to have a special election.
Well, the reason we had it in August is because of the pandemic, Mark, we didn't know.
Right, well, we didn't have things ready. I mean, it took 45 days for the warrant articles and we didn't have them ready, so it pushed us through. We had the June vote for the state items, but yet we had to wait for the warrant articles in August.
I think it was that citizen petition in part because it needed time with the planning board.
No, whichever way it is, I just don't think it, you know,
Bill, I, I don't.
One vote, one time.
Well, of course, that's what we.
We're back to regular business, hopefully.
It was different, different. This is normal sort of situation. Bill, did you want to add anything about that?
No, I'm good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is law and ordinance, chapter 11, sign standards.
Yeah, so this is what the ordinance review committee's been working on this, um, this winter. It started with, well, there came from several directions, but our town lawyer, as we were looking at the sign ordinance for other reasons, suggested that there had, I mean, indicated that there had been a US Supreme Court decision in 2015 that had required a lot of towns to redo their sign ordinances. Because the Supreme Court decision said you, your sign ordinances have to be content neutral. You can't say that this kind of a sign can be this size and has these limits. And then another kind of sign can be bigger, can be smaller. You fundamentally, if you have to read what the sign says to know what the sign requirements are, that's not consistent with the US Supreme Court decision. So we kept that in mind. Bob Hall, who's on the ordinance review committee, was instrumental in working with us on this sign ordinance. Because there were so many changes, rather than confusing the voters with, you know, we're going to change this paragraph here and this paragraph here. It's just a total rewrite of the sign ordinance, so we're repealing the old one, replacing it with this new one. Couple of other things that are included in this sign ordinance. Our CEO was concerned that there are sometimes signs that don't comply and haven't gotten a permit from our planning office or for other reasons, need to be taken down, but was concerned he didn't have the authority in the current sign ordinance to remove signs. So this has clear authority to do that. And then the third thing this accomplishes is dealing with sort of sign clutter. And we see that at Route 1 and 90 in particular, but you know, it, it, it could be a moving target. But it at least allows the town manager and the staff to have the authority to create a designated sign area. You know, we want to make sure our nonprofits and all of that can post their signs, but we also want to make sure that some of the towns' entryways and access points are, aren't cluttered. make sure that some of the towns', um, entryways and access points are, um, aren't cluttered with signs. So, any, any questions? So I don't know if we need to do anything more on this now, Bill, or we'll just deal with it on April eighth as part of the warrant?
Yeah, as part of the warrant, the board will deal with it, so, uh, the planning, the planning board has to have a public hearing on it. Um, that's on the twenty-fifth, I believe, of March, um, and if they, um, they'll take a recommendation, send it on to the select board to place it on the, assuming that they do place it on the, uh, town meeting warrant, um, and then the board will decide whether to put on the warrant or not.
And I want to give a, you know, thanks to Bob Hall, because he did a really good job of making this much cleaner, um, a very well-written ordinance that'll, I think, help everyone figure out what they're required to do, and he put a lot of time into it. Okay.
That leaves us with select board reports, and I'll just say that I've already given mine in, in essence, with respect to broadband, so, who would like to go next? Jeff?
So, I'll start with the comp plan, and then you add everything that I forgot, which might be a lot. Uh, comp plan is meeting approximately every two weeks. It is a good group. It has gone into the performing stage of team development, after going through a lot of forming, norming, storming. Uh, the, the group has an action plan, which, uh, my hope is that you'll all have a chance to see at some point in time. It clearly lays out milestones, step to milestone, states responsibilities, and plans this thing right out for the next year plus to get to a comp plan on a vote, on a, for vote. It's, it's really quite impressive. It, it keeps everybody on task. There's no variation. There's by April first, this has to be done, by May first, this has to be done, et cetera. About a page and a half long, it's really good. Uh, upcoming meeting tomorrow night, I'm going to present the work that the select board did with the comp plan committee from two thousand eighteen, uh, and go through the fifty-three-page spreadsheet of all things that we said, yes, no, modify, et cetera. Uh, and that's just to get that information and that feedback to the group, so that they can, uh, have that in their hand, because it's not really in a format that's easily, uh, communicated on paper. So, at the end of tomorrow night's meeting, everybody will have everything that has ever been done, associated with the comp plan for the town of Rockport, uh, recent and past. And then, uh, you'll start seeing at some point in time here soon, some survey activity happening with the comp plan. And again, this group meets every two weeks and has homework and action steps in between. The two folks that we just approved for committee membership are value-added, as Michelle said, they have actively participated, uh, at least been engaged, you know, from a conceptual standpoint in these meetings, and showing interest in making sure everything's successful. Anything else on the comp plan that I missed, Michelle?
No, I think you captured it. It's a very committed group of people, and they've got a lot of work ahead of them, but they're, uh, they're ready to do it, so, I think you got it all.
Okay. Uh, Mark, I'll let you do the capital plan. Our committee next meeting is on the seventeenth. Pathways met last week, however, we had a budget meeting at the same time, so I did not have the details and the outcome of that meeting at this point. That's it.
Great. Thanks. Um, who wants to go next?
I'll go. Um, we have a meeting on, we have a meeting tomorrow for, uh, comprehensive plan, sorry. And we have a meeting on, I think it's the fifteenth, Bill, keep me if I'm correct, for investment committee to review the requests for proposals. Um, I think that's the date, but that's coming up, um, and I think that's all I have for an update. I I did, I did pick up my hefty reading package for those that request for proposals that were returned, so we'll get, we'll get through those.
And that meeting is on the fifteenth, Michelle.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I have only forward-looking meetings. Uh, Parks Committee, uh, will be Wednesday, same time as the broadband coalition, so, Mark, you're okay covering parks?
Yeah.
Um, and then Opera House is on Thursday, and, um, I think that's it.
As you heard, Parks is Wednesday, Conservation Thursday, Capital Improvement. Jeff, I'm looking for my notes, but I don't have anything. Not that I can put my hands on.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the stuff's included in the budget that you share.
Right. Yeah. Oh, God, there was a question I had to reveal, but I'll try to think of it and get to you later. It's good for now.
I would just, I said, everybody, I think everybody did their reports. I would add the Economic Development Committee. They have been, uh, sharing a document, they've got a meeting this week, Thursday morning, I think, and, um, they have been putting together a document with, um, uh, sort of goals, um, for economic development, which, um, you know, when it's, it's just an iterative document right now, but when it's, uh, more finalized, I think that's something that should be shared with the board, just for your information and feedback and so forth, but it's really good, and they've, we've got a really great group on, um, on economic development, and they're really thinking outside the box on things, and I'm really look forward to, um, you know, to good, uh, good recommendations coming from that group in progress. Okay, anything else? Bill, do you have anything to add? We have an executive session tomorrow, as we know, and, um, that's it, at four forty-five tomorrow. All right. With somebody.
Second.
Anybody gonna say no? Hey, I want you to know, this is six twenty-seven, this is less than an hour. This is pretty good.
Maybe we ought to have one meeting a month.
All right.
I second that concept.
All in favor, yes.
Yes, yes, okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.